Call this meeting to order, stand for the Fledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Marie Pencal.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please silence your cell phones. We have a couple additions to the agenda, Ryan?
Yes.
The Highway 12?
Yes, Mr. Chair, it's to accept the bid and contract for the County Road 12 project. We can put that under Public Works and then we have a discussion on our mask policy that I would recommend we put at item three in our administration.
Okay. Motion to second. Any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Consent agenda?
Move the consent agenda.
Motion to second, any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Public appearances, a little early, anybody here? Apparently not. Okay. Ryan, you're gonna talk about the resolu- oh no.
Justin will, we'll talk about the resolution.
Justin, could you move forward?
Good morning, everyone.
Morning, Justin.
So, as everyone was aware, on June 29th, we received an upwards of some spots eight to 10 inches of rain. It caused some pretty significant damage to Belgrade and Niklet Township and along with some of the county roads. I asked for a, the state about getting a declaration and Commissioner Look, he signed a resolution on July 1st and I have also sent a copy on July 1st to the state of Minnesota to request a damage assessment and I am currently waiting for the state to schedule that.
And just so the board's aware, past practice has been when we have these disaster declarations, of course, they're never timed with board meetings, so they allow us to sign in advance, the chair and myself, and then do an after the fact approval, which is what we're requesting today.
I'll move the resolution.
Motion to second, any more discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Marle?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Passes.
As long as we've got Justin here, Mr. Chair, Justin, can you just explain what the declaration gets us as far as eligible projects and that type of thing?
Yes, there's an indicator that is set by the state for public assistance, which for Niklet County is just under 63,000. It's 75.25 and right now Niklet County is currently at just under 131,000 in reported damages. And it's not going to make, I checked yesterday, it's not gonna make the federal level just for the simple fact that it was such a small area that was affected. I think they said three, four counties max on that particular event, so it'll be a state, a state declaration, state disaster and it's, we're not gonna, I think they had to have for a federal, yeah, you need to have 8.1 million dollars in damages for the state and we're just not gonna get that.
Mr. Chair, just a brief question on that, is those running totals that you gave us, are they consistent with damage to public property?
Correct.
There's no, there's no private tiering in this? It's just merely, it's like any of other declarations we've had.
Correct.
Thank you.
Question I have is that is it township road that split between is a Cortland Township and Niklet Township? Where there's a hill? Or is that a county road, Seth? Where they have a lot of problems with erosion, I was wondering if that got hit?
There's a lot of roads that have problems with erosion. I don't know which one.
Justin, on the list, is it all township roads or did we have any county roads?
Yeah, we had some.
Yep, I have the list, there's... Majority of it's township. All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Mr. Jensen?
Mr. Chair, if I could take this aside. May I remain here instead of moving over there? Mr. Chair, as you may recall, the board previously adopted an ordinance regarding the resolution of dangerous and potentially dangerous dogs pursuant to statute that pu- adoption needed to be published. It was duly published on July 2nd and so we are here today asking the board to approve the resolution that is in your packet, to adopt that ordinance for potentially dangerous and dangerous dogs as well as the procedures for licensing those animals. The proposed resolution also notes that this new ordinance supersedes the previous resolution 276-2001 relating to the dangerous dog license fee. So I'd ask the board to consider adopting that resolution.
Mr. Chair, I move the resolution.
Motion to second, discussion, questions for Carl? You have a statement, Carl?
Nope, just here to support.
Here in case there was a question, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
This is the resolution, correct?
Yes.
Call the roll, please.
Yeah?
Yes.
Marle?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
Did you get my messages about County 21 from that one party?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, dangerous towns. Okay, Seth, you're up.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board and staff. Several items from Public Works today and when I'm done with those two items, if there's, if I could have a little time for project updates.
Excellent.
Appreciate that. So, first item on my agenda here is Consider Award of our 2020 Highway Striping Project. This is an annual contract that we award to re-stripe a portion of our paved road mileage. Three bids were received and opened on June 29th. The bid results were included in your packet. Traffic marking surface was the low bid with a bid amount of 120,879.18. So I'm asking the board today to award our 2020 Highway Striping Project to Traffic Marking Surface.
Second.
Motion to second. Do we try and do like 25% of the roads every year or?
The percentage, the percentage changes a little bit every year. Some of our higher volume traffic roads, we may re-stripe every year.
Oh, okay.
Whereas some of the lower volume roads, we may stripe every other year or maybe every third year. Just, we kind of take a look at all the road mileage and so the ultimate percentage changes a little bit every year. But it's usually half to a little more than half of the road mileage every year.
Thank you, any more questions for Seth on the road striping?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. So you're saying that all of the, half of the roads will be striped this, this year?
At least, at least 50% of the mileage.
And then back and forth and back and forth.
Yep. And again, some of those higher mileage roads, we may re-stripe every year.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Okay, Seth, you're gonna talk about County Road 12?
Yep, next item is Consider Award of Contract for State Project 52612008. And of course, this is for the County Road 12 project where we'll be reconstructing a portion of County Road 12 along with a significant grade raise through the flooded portion of County Road 12. We opened bids on June 30th, we received four bids. Those bid results are attached in your packet. Mathewitz Construction was the low bidder with a bid amount of 5,995,534.78. This bid was lower than our engineer's estimate by a, by a fair amount given the complexity of this project and items that we don't have any real historical data on what kind of pricing to, we would expect on those resulted in our engineer's estimate being a bit higher than, than what Mathewitz came in for that bid. So for the taxpayer, that lower bid amount is definitely good. Given the complexity of this project, I wouldn't be surprised if we end up with some change orders and whatnot for unforeseen items that we, we may see out there. So of that almost $6 million bid, this will be paid for with a variety of funding sources. We'll be using some of our county state aid, regular construction funds. We got state aid disaster funds, federal highway emergency relief funds and state park road account funds. And so of that almost $6 million bid, a little over 3.4 million of that will be covered by outside funding sources that aren't part of our normal revenue stream. If we do have some change orders and some additional cost is, needed to be expended out there, those outside funding sources, we have secured more than the 3.4 million because those funding sources were developed based on our engineer's estimate. So that's nice that we have a little higher cap to work with. So I'm asking the board today to award this contract to Mathewitz Construction Co. And I would be, weren't happy to answer any questions on this item.
I just have a couple of questions, Mr. Chair. One being, this will be the project in totality, is that correct?
Yes.
So this will run probably over, minimally over two years?
Yes, yes, our start date, contract start date is August 17th of this year with the contract completion date of towards the end of October of 2021. That completion date can vary, it could complete sooner. It all depends on what we see for settlement rates in the grade raise area. That will really drive what that ultimate completion date is. But looking at worst case scenario and longer settlement times, that's where, how we arrive at that later in October timeframe of 2021.
So by going forward at this point, it's pretty much all of the regulatory components that we have been, I should say that we, you have been working and dealing with, everybody has signed off now. We're absolutely good to go.
Yes, if we didn't have those sign offs, this project could not move forward.
Couldn't move forward.
MinDOT would not have authorized us to proceed with bidding.
I'd, I'd like to thank you and your staff for doing a yeoman's effort to make this go as quickly as we can and thank you for, I know there was a lot of T-crossing and I-dotting to get you where you needed to be, so I appreciate that, I genuinely do and I'm very proud of the work that you guys have been doing to make that happen.
Even through a nursing home window.
Even through a nursing home window, you guys, like I said, you went above and beyond and all of those things made a difference and so I would, I would move the, accepting of the bid.
Motion to second, I got a couple of questions, Seth.
Yes.
What's the chances local traffic will be able to drive through that over winter?
No idea.
Over the water?
Really don't know. We do have in the plan, the potential for, when I say local traffic, basically the people that live on the road, not locals living in Lafayette that want to come through. But we have made provisions that the surcharge, the top of the surcharge would basically be graded out to provide a one lane of traffic. Now, depending on settlement again, and as we build that surcharge in what we call staged construction, we just don't hog all the material in right away because more than likely that would lead to a, to a failure.
Sure.
But we'll be putting a certain amount of material in, monitoring that settlement, putting another layer in. And however long that takes, it may be December, January before that surcharge is, is complete depending on just how that settlement works. We will not have that open during the winter months. To try to plow snow and maintain that during the winter months would be very difficult and quite frankly, probably dangerous for the public trying to be going through there. But if things go very well and say the surcharge is already built in early November, it's the potential could exist that maybe that's open for a while up to December. We would then close it and then open it again in the spring until whatever time that we're able to start removing the surcharge and completing the project.
And somebody asked me... You told me but I forgot, what was the diameter of the culvert?
Oh, under the surcharge area, the equalization pipe, it's a 36 inch diameter, inch, inch and quarter wall thickness, 110 foot long stick pipe. One pipe.
And is there gonna be any problems with that power pole thing there with our?
No.
Rocks?
Nope.
Wish I had it.
We've discussed with Excel, that power pole foundation is a pile-supported foundation and so I think they have 40 to 50 foot long pilings that extend down below that concrete base that provides that support for, for that tower. So Excel was not concerned at all with our, our work during the...
More questions, Marie?
Mr. Chair, it also includes on the, I guess, south end where it potentially meets the reconstructed Highway 14 interchange. This project addresses that also, correct?
This project ends right where MinDOT will pick up and realign County Road 12 to, yeah, hook into the new interchange area north of Cortland, yep.
Which is good, you know that you go down that hill because that'd be pretty expensive.
Lot less expensive than building through the surcharge.
Jack, questions?
Chair, thank you. Seth, in filling this dip?
Yes.
To create this higher road, I'm seeing 31,494 tons of rock, crushed rock?
There's several different types of items that will go in there. We have a crushed rock special one, crushed rock special two. And so, yeah, there's a significant amount of material to go in.
Can you remind me, I think like the chair, I might have forgotten, how much fill to make this?
Eight to nine feet in the deepest portion.
Say it again?
Somewhere between eight and nine feet at its highest portion that we gotta raise.
And then?
For about 1,300 feet.
And what are the guarantees that that won't flood over again?
Well, I would say 100%, but the minute I say that, we'll see some epic god drain event and everything will be underwater. But the elevation that we picked for the finished central, shoulder, the edge of the shoulder through this area is two feet above the natural water runout elevation of this basin. So if we got that right, this should never flood again.
Then it'll take on Highway 14.
So the culvert that you talked about, John?
Between the two sides?
Right, so is it drain from east to west, right?
It's just to keep it balanced.
It's just an equalization pipe, so if more water...
I think there's very little flow between the sides.
Just so it doesn't, the road itself doesn't become a dam, it has to equalize both sides of it.
When we looked at the drainage area, the drainage areas are similar on the east and west side. So without the pipe, it would have probably equalized pretty naturally and as much crushed rock as we're putting in, there will be water moving back and forth even without the pipe. But the DNR wanted a definite structure in there to provide equalization.
So no digging on the west side to create a big hole to take more water?
No.
Just, this is road?
Yep, this is road. Within 120 foot corridor.
120 feet long, so?
Don't know, our right of way corridor, total width is 120 feet through this area.
What is the shoulder gonna be, is the shoulders gonna be eight feet?
Eight foot shoulders, two foot of that will be paid. It'll be eight feet through the wetland.
Everything will be straight road.
More questions?
Yes, we went, typically with reconstruction projects, we shoot for an eight foot shoulder just given as much farm equipment that we have. And then through this area with the wider shoulder and a fairly flat in slope, we're able to not have guard rail out there, which was, was important because it would have become a, a snow trap issue.
Absolutely.
When that freezes over, the wind and snow really blows through there and guard rail would definitely contribute to drifting issues.
Well, it's easier to get big equipment downtown.
And it should improve visibility. That will be not as dippy.
Not as dippy.
You'll be able to see the wall from there now.
More questions?
All the question.
Ken?
Yes.
Marle?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Should we have voted on the striping since it was an expenditure of funds instead of?
We did, we did.
Instead of, should we have all called that?
Okay, no, that's mine.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, thank you. Ryan?
Nope.
Sorry. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, Seth.
All right, I'm gonna give a project update, kind of what we're work, major projects that we're, we're working on not only for this year but for the coming years. The County Road 14 slope slide repair, we currently have that project out for bid. We're opening bids on July 27th. That contract, we have a contract start date of September 8th and a completion date of November 8th and that timeframe for this project is extremely tight timeframe. And so it'll be interesting to see what we receive for bid results. Hopefully we receive favorable bid results and then get that project done this year. So that's where that project's at. The Government Center Parking Lot, we've completed that, it's open. I don't know if any of you have had the chance to park in there, it turned out very nice. There is some sod that through the hot weather looks like it's probably died and will need to be replaced and of course, that replacement is part of the contract at no cost to the county, but we're not gonna require the contract, contractor to come in right now during these hottest months and replace that and so we'll look at doing that probably in early September when we have cooler weather. County Road 21 slope slide, just, that happened just east of the intersection with County Road 14. That probably occurred a little over, it's gotta be three weeks or so ago already. Gale Tech Engineering and SRF Consulting are working on geotechnical reports and a hydraulic report for that area. I have received the draft geotech report back from Gale Tech Engineering with recommendations on temporary, temporary repair and then two permanent repair options to fix that slope slide. And it's not only just the piece that everybody sees that has slid out, it's in totality, there's about 600 feet that we have to address. Going further east from the area where we have County Road 21 down to just a single lane, there is a portion about the 500 foot long stretch where the slope has already moved probably this far. And so at some point, that will eventually slide into the Minnesota, Minnesota River. And so as part of this project, we're gonna address that, that whole area. So the temporary repair for the 100 feet that, that slid out, we're looking at hopefully completing in fall, probably mid-November or so after the County Road 14 project completes because a lot of that rock that we placed on the slope on 14, we would reuse as part of this temporary slope repair. And why we're looking at just a temporary project because to put the plans and do all permitting for the permanent repair, there is just not enough time between now and freeze up to accomplish, accomplish that. So we would fill those depressions in with rock, build enough shoulder with rock and then probably put the concrete jersey barrier to protect traffic from going off edge like we did on County Road 14 and that would buy us time over the winter and then to next year to complete the, the final plans for the permanent repair. And so the estimated cost just to do the temporary repair right now is about 125,000. So the permanent repair options, we'd be looking at doing that probably in 2021. Like I said, it would require about 600 feet that we'd be fixing. The first option is a sheet pile wall and it has a rough estimated cost right now of about $2 million for that option. The second option is what we're doing on the County Road 14 slope is what we call reinforced soil slope. But it does have some drawbacks when we get into construction possibly. We have to excavate down and get very close to the existing water level on the Minnesota River while it's low, of course. Once we start construction, if the river, if we receive a bunch of rain and the river comes up, it could damage the work that they're, they're, they're starting on. So that's, that's one drawback, but if we can hit a timeframe where we have reasonable low river levels and we don't receive any disastrous storms during that period, we got a rough estimated cost of 1.5 million to do that option. And so we're still gonna be discussing both of those options and arrive at a conclusion here soon so we can start our, our detailed design work and permitting. I have reached out to MinDOT to see if there's any potential for state aid disaster funding or federal highway emergency relief funding to help with this project. Typically to be eligible for any of these disaster funds, you have, your damage has to fall within the dates that they set for an actual disaster. Well, issue that we got on County Road 21, the slope doesn't fail because of that, you know, defined time limit of where you receive excessive precipitation. It always happens after we finally get into normal weather, dry periods where then the Minnesota River can drop. All that moisture that's saturated, those underlying soils now wants to come out and that's when we see those slope failures because the high water levels provides pressure against that slope to hold everything stable and so when it drops, everything wants to come back out. So that's when the slides happen, so. MinDOT is looking into the, the potential for, for outside funding for this but they haven't been able to give me the definitive answer on it, on it yet. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed that we can tap into some more of those funds to help with this.
Just a question, do we have any permitting issues to do the temporary repair?
For temporary work, and with the temporary work, we have, we don't get down into the Minnesota River Channel as much and so the Corps of Engineers are more lenient, they have existing permits for, for basic work that we don't have to go into real detailed permitting with them. Same thing with, with the DNR and so...
You don't expect a big problem with it?
Much more streamlined with, with the temporary repair. When we get into the permanent repair and we're getting into the Minnesota River Channel a little bit and the length of the project then triggers different thresholds, yeah, we get into much more in-depth permitting with the Corps of Engineers. I mean, the review time alone ends up being 90 days because it all goes out for public comment and whatnot. So that's, when you start backtracking all those dates and whatnot, it just becomes apparent that doing a permanent repair this year is, is not feasible. Any other questions on 21?
Well, continue 21 to the bridge, how are we doing here?
Oh, yes, the bridge, the bridge is, the bridge is going very well. They are, right now, they have it scheduled for tomorrow for the, for the deck pour and so there's weather limitations that have to be met or they can't have any forecasted rain like three hours before the pour. And so there's, uh, weather limitations that have to be met or they can't have any forecasted rain like three hours before the pour starts or three hours after. And some other parameters there that, uh, can derail that. But, uh, right now, tomorrow's looking weather-wise very well and, uh, so far, things are on on track to to complete that deck pour tomorrow, so.
So when will be opened the traffic then?
Uh, the deck will have to sit for a period of time to kear out before they can have any heavy equipment on that deck to then pour railings. It it'll probably be a good another month or so before we're looking at opening that up. And of course, the project was, um, somewhat delayed because of the virus issue because we couldn't get concrete beams because the concrete beam manufacturer had employees come down with with COVID and they had to shut down operations completely and our beams couldn't be made and the project was ready for beams, so. We're getting there.
More questions?
I will just add on the parking lots, uh, I've got a lot of positive feedback from staff on having that and not having to park on the street. It is much safer, uh, the crosswalk is very nice and I finally found an engineer who knows how to design a parking lot that accommodates a full-size pickup. I don't, doesn't take six or seven times for me to back in and forth, uh, to park my truck and.
Well, first guy in, first guy out, you rarely have a problem.
Right. No, it's it's designed very well, it's shedding water perfect, uh, I think our engineering tech shot it's with elevations thirty or forty times to make it perfect. But, uh, it's, uh, it's really turned out nice, so it's working out very well.
Good.
A couple more projects just to update you on, primarily everything I've talked about has been unforeseen disaster projects that we never planned on originally doing. Uh, these next two are planned projects, um, County Road fifteen reconstruction from highway, trunk highway fifteen to County Road fifty-one. Uh, we tentatively planned a twenty, as a twenty twenty-two project. Of course, this will be a full reconstruction of that road. Uh, Stone Brook Engineering, uh, is our consulting firm that we had hired to help us with this design. They're working on that preliminary design right now, uh, they're working on getting construction limits defined, uh, which will work into getting the draft plat, um, finished. Once that draft plat is done, uh, I'll be looking at, uh, bringing on an appraiser because we're gonna have to purchase a significant amount of of property because we're going from like a forty-two and a half foot from center line right away corridor out to sixty. And so when you add an extra eighteen feet on both sides for twelve miles, you're talking significant amount of acreage that we'll we will be purchasing. A lot of farmsteads along there and so we will need an appraiser to, um, evaluate those land acquisitions. So be prepared for me to be coming back probably sometime in the fall, uh, asking you to, uh, approve a contract with a an appraiser to to start that work. As Stone Brook, uh, gets a little further on their preliminary design, we are looking at holding a landowner open house in probably late July, early August of this year to get, uh, landowners to come in to give us comments, um, on our plans. This is also a very beneficial time for them to come in and tell us where tile lines, tile line crossings are. Because a lot of times without intakes in the road ditches, those old crossings were never marked and so we have no idea where those, um, those are at. So getting those landowners to come in is is very beneficial to capturing, um, that that data. So we're gonna be looking at doing that here sooner than later. Uh, the other project, uh, that we're working on, uh, County Road thirteen concrete overlay, which will go from five hundred and sixth street to trunk highway ninety-nine. It's a little close to a five mile long project, that's gonna be a next year project, a twenty twenty-one project. We have, um, normal federal highway funding for that project, about one point six million dollars and we're just starting on our plan development and design. So we're excited for some hopefully normal projects coming up. That's where we're, that's what we're working on right now.
More questions for Seth? Yes.
So Chair on the County Road fifteen, are we gonna take some of the curves off?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yep, we're gonna, wherever we can, we will be improving curvature. So we, I know there's a fair amount of them posted down to forty miles an hour, forty-five miles an hour. I believe some of those will have to remain at forty-five just because we're cons, one of the issues is, uh, the the concrete bridge that crosses the county ditch. We're not gonna tear out a one and a half to two million dollar bridge that wasn't built that long ago just to improve the curvature there. But we are able to make some improvements to those curbers right by that bridge. But other ones will see some significant amount of of improvement. And so the road alignment in some areas will deviate a significant amount, you know, thirty, forty feet in ca, in some cases. Yep, eight-foot shoulders, flatter in slopes, so if you leave the road, you're not gone forever.
That project will likely be our first project where we start using sales tax dollars and we'll likely have to bond as well. So that discussion will occur next year on how that all happens.
Yeah, we'll look at using multiple funding sources, like Ryan said, the sales tax and probably some of our county state aid regular funds and maybe even some wheelage tax.
One thing on, uh, on County Road twelve, I was just, I don't know if impressed is the right word, surprised at the difference really a little bit in the high bid. Like two million dollars.
Yes, that's not completely uncommon from the, if you get multiple bids, typically I see a significant price difference between the low to the high. All depends on how hungry a contractor is and how they see the project unfolding for themselves, so.
And it's good for the community of Sleepy Island, Del Monte shutting down, I'm sure there's needs for employment.
Mm-hmm.
Questions? Okay, Ryan.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Seth.
It's okay, I'll just, uh, I'll just sit here, I've got a lot of material today and we'll be having some staff come up here shortly. Uh, first item that I have today is, uh, public comment and resolution establishing the appointed office of county recorder. Uh, Minnesota statute three seventy-five A twelve oh five provides process for making certain elected offices appointed. With the retirement and resignation of elected county recorder Kathy Conlon, the board approved a resolution June twenty-third that stated public comment will be heard at today's meeting uh, regarding making that office appointed. Should the board decide to move forward with that, there's a resolution attached in your packets that, uh, provides for making that office appointed. Does require a four-fifths vote. If there is a four-fifths vote approving it, uh, it would take effect August thirteenth unless there's a petition filed by ten percent of the county's voters uh, to make the action go to a referendum vote instead. I'd be happy to answer any questions and we should, uh, acknowledge or ask if there's any comments as well. I did not receive anything by mail or email.
Okay. Questions?
Just take the comment period, I guess. I'd be happy to move the resolution.
Sir, a second?
Are you asking for public comment?
That that was my question, I asked for the public comment first to make sure.
Yes, you asked for the public comment.
Just go ahead and ask formally so it's on the record.
I would like any public comment on this issue. We don't need a motion on that.
No, 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 it's just, you're opening it to the to the community and absent that, I would then offer my, uh, motion for resolution.
Second, any discussion?
And you said ten percent of the registered voters?
Right, which I believe is, there's eighteen thousand registered voters roughly in the county, so.
Eighteen hundred would have to.
I.
You aren't gonna find fifty.
I have never heard of that successfully being done in Minnesota.
If it were that an issue, we would've had some comment now, I think, too.
Right.
Any more questions for Ryan? So we're ready to vote on the resolution?
Do a roll call.
Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Mara?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Hor.
Yes.
Pass it down nicely, I'll be on the four fifths.
Uh, next item, Mr. Chair, members of the board, is, uh, the CARES Act funding. Uh, as you're aware, the county received four point one million dollars of federal CARES Act dollars, uh, to assist with the costs associated with responding to COVID, to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, myself and other staff have been, uh, uh, looking at options for how these funds can be spent. Their federal guidance has been coming out basically weekly, um, on this matter. And of course, uh, with any, uh, program of this size, there's a lot of gray area and determinations that need to be made on how funds can be spent. I will go to, uh, in your packets, uh, the first handout I, or the handout provided in your packet, uh, lists the eligible criteria uh, that makes an expense eligible for CARES Act dollars. And they are, uh, necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to the coronavirus. Uh, they were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, which is the date the CARES Act went into effect. And that the expenses were incurred during a period between March first and December, uh, thirtieth. So that's the general, uh, guidance on what can be used, uh, to to, uh, reimburse or use the CARES Act funds for. Uh, there's two handouts that were provided to you today. The first one is on a regular eight and a half by eleven size sheet, uh, a list of anticipated costs that we've come up with so far on where we think we can either reimburse ourselves as a county or put the money back out into the community. Uh, I'll just read through these in general so you have somewhat of an idea of what we're looking at. So of course, it's any costs related to COVID testing or contact tracing, most public health costs, uh, certain payroll and benefit expenses. This is where it's a real gray area yet, uh, on the federal guidance. We're definitely gonna be able to, uh, reimburse ourselves for, uh, the core public health staff that we've had working on, uh, the COVID nineteen pandemic. There is some federal guidance that, uh, indicates that we can possibly reimburse ourselves for all public health and public safety payroll and benefit expenses. There's, there's quite a, quite a discussion going on of how broad that actually is. If that's the case, we'll be able to reimburse ourselves a significant dollar amounts, I would guess in one and a half to two million possibly of payroll and benefit expenses if we're allowed to, uh, take it that broad. Uh, so that that remains to be seen how that will will work out. I also anticipate being able to reimburse some of my expenses, Jamie's expenses and some I T costs as well. But we continue to to work on that piece. Uh, expenses for disinfect, disinfecting public areas and installing P P E in glass, which you can see we've done here in this building as well as other buildings. Uh, expenses to provide telework capabilities, which we have a significant amount of expenditures there. Uh, paid sick time and federal COVID nineteen time, if you recall, uh, the federal government provided two weeks of, uh, COVID time, I'll call it, for people impacted, uh, uh, by the pandemic. And we have used us several amount of hours, uh, related to that. Any COVID expenses for operating the jail, all P P E. Expenses for food delivery to residents, which we've been making, um, through human services. Unemployment cost, uh, now we haven't laid anybody off, but when an employee, if they leave here, go to another employer and get laid off, we sometimes, um, are on the hook for paying part of that unemployment cost, so that would apply. Facility modifications, which you see we've made in the foyer here. Uh, we are planning to also install a drop box here, which would be very beneficial as well as making, uh, the workstations down there more of of a permanent nature. So we're looking at those type of modifications. We're looking at county burials, actually, we've had some county burials that have been COVID-related. Uh, so we're looking at poss, the possibility of reimbursement for that. And then the next items are more programmatic or community-based items that I'll talk about, uh, on the, on the next handout. There is in the guidance, uh, at the very end there, any other COVID-related expense reasonably necessary to the function of government that satisfy, that satisfies the three criteria that I read before. So it's kind of the catch-all there. Uh, we will be audited by our state auditors on how we spend this money. The federal government, US Treasury will also do audits randomly across the country. You won't know if you're gonna be selected or not until that happens. Uh, I'll turn your attention then to, uh, the legal-sized handouts that you have here, uh, which is a list of, uh, community business and nonprofit assistance projects or programs that we've discussed that would be eligible expenditures of the care funds that we could use to get the money back out into the community to individuals or businesses that have been impacted by the pandemic. Naturally, I'm working closely with Health and Human Services on a lot of these because we would administer several of them through, uh, Health and Human Services. So I'll have Cassie come up and she can speak better to the first page here of of items that we're looking at that would be, again, eligible expenditures that we think we can administer, uh, internally here and get some money back out to the community.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My handout printed a little bit differently than I imagine yours did, so I'm sorry if I'm going out of order.
Here you go.
Thank you. Okay. So, uh, one of our first options was to consider a one-time grant to the St. Peter Food Shelf. This has been something that we've seen as common when we know that their operating expenses and methods have changed significantly during this period. Uh, we specifically have been working very closely with the St. Peter Food Shelf to provide essential, um, cleaning supplies and food for homes that are under quarantine. Uh, we've been able to get trunkfuls of food and, um, assist people by getting that delivered very quickly, um, during off-hours as well. So, uh, very close partnership that we'd like to reinforce there. Our next section was COVID nineteen eviction assistance. This we were looking at adding because, um, currently, uh, our emergency assistance program is pretty prescribed and has very strict regulations around it. It, uh, allows people to kind of climb out of a shallow hole that they might be in related to rent, uh, as long as they can prove that things will be running well with their budget in the next month and that it's a quick fix, um, and not something that would be ongoing. Uh, with the moratorium ending on evictions at the end of July, uh, we believe that we will see people facing eviction and the small amount of assistance that they might have been able to qualify won't be enough in order to repair the damage done, um, so they wouldn't qualify for emergency assistance. Uh, our hope with these, uh, small, uh, amounts that we would be able to give would be that we allow families to be able to stay in their homes then. We still would work with them to, you know, complete a budget and find something that would be more ongoing. Um, but this would certainly make a significant impact in our communities, uh, for families as well as for landlords. Uh, the amounts that we have listed here, I think, are are a draft of what we're looking at right now. Um, in regional discussions, we've talked about wanting to settle on some kind of, um, amount that the majority of the region would follow so that we don't have people going back and forth between counties. Childcare scholarships, um, again, we have done really well in Nicollet County with our childcare assistance program, not having a waitlist in this last year. However, we do believe that there are probably families who are unable to pay for childcare currently, um, due to loss of employment or other situations related to COVID nineteen. So we would be putting together, um, potentially small scholarships that we would, um, I guess have to have a cap on and monitor that so that, very early stages of what that would look like, um, and not sure how many people that would apply to. Um, we did already use our respite grant dollars this year to fund iPads for children to do distance learning with the school. So we would be looking to reallocate some of these funds back to our respite grant. Our respite grant itself, uh, was greatly reduced this last year and asked to be stretched for eighteen months instead of twelve. So, um, the distance learning costs can be applied to CARES funding instead and we foresee that we would continue to help families with that um, depending on how this next school year is announced. Our community partner funding, uh, was a discussion because we know that we have many partners in the community we work very closely with who are struggling related to costs, um, due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. These would be one-time grants to fund those operating expenses. Um, some of them that come to mind right away are telehealth costs that came up overnight that people, um, really moved ahead with quickly so that they could continue to offer mental health services to our clients. So that they could continue to offer mental health services to our clients. Partners for Affordable Housing uh, has been a great partner and willing to assist us if we had people who are displaced. Solace Housing, we were thinking that they likely have a lot of expenses related to PPE, um, changes in staffing. Uh, potential um, dollars that aren't getting brought in from their tenants. Our daycare facilities are another one, where some of them have been minimally affected. Uh, whereas others who normally had a waitlist only have two families there and are trying to stay open currently to provide services for essential employees. But they um, don't know if they'll be able to continue to do so, uh, when their revenue is so low at the current time. And then I mentioned our mental health clinics. Uh, and lastly on my list would be the Business Health and Safety Grants. Uh, we will be working together or would be requesting to work to develop um, PPE. Um, baskets or supplies to provide to all of our small businesses. Uh, we know that with requirements changing uh, about how businesses are required to sanitize and distance and wear masks. That we would really like to be able to make sure that they've got those available to them. And we would also then look at the same thing with that workplace modification reimbursement. So those costs that people have had to um, put into their operating or their structure very quickly.
I'll just add on this piece in my research, of course, the counties over five hundred thousand received their money in April. So um, in an effort, try to not reinvent the wheel and get some good ideas. I've been researching larger counties across the country and this is a very common one. Where it's the um, PPE kits that are being provided to businesses. I did add the piece uh, about the, the grant for workplace modifications. So let's say if a restaurant had to add outside seating, that type of thing, that it could be an eligible reimbursement as well. And Cassie, you can just stay there, because I'm sure there'll be questions, I'll finish out the list here. So another eligible expense uh, would be livestock depopulation costs and economic assistance for those farmers that experienced that. I believe that um, we have not had that occur in Niklet County yet, maybe one farmer. We're, a couple that we're looking into that have maybe had to incur some costs there. But that would be an eligible expenditure, that would be a good way to get money into the ag community. I, I want to circle back to, well, I'll go down to the nonprofit assistance and come back to the business assistance grants. Uh, for nonprofits, um, I'm still looking into creative ways we could assist our Fair Board and Historical Society. That would be eligible expenditures. And then uh, as far as schools, uh, it does appear that we can assist schools. And distance learning is specifically mentioned in the federal guidance as an acceptable use of those funds. I know schools did receive some CARES Act dollars, uh, but it's, I'm sure is not enough to cover their costs in the spring and both probably in the fall as well. I did have one of our school districts reach out to me last week, uh, inquiring about our CARES Act dollars and if it would be available to our schools. And that school did indicate that they're anticipating a forty thousand dollar cost, that they don't, they don't know how they're going to cover this fall to try to provide distance learning. So um, again, that might be another way to uh, get a broad-reaching impact on these dollars and get it out across the county. Back to the business assistance grants. Uh, as I've mentioned to you in the past, there was some discussion when the legislature was considering this uh, how to allocate these funds. That it would be required that ten percent of the funds go for business assistance. Uh, when the governor ended up uh, distributing these funds through executive order, he did not require that. Some legislators had indicated that they still want to see cities and counties uh, provide business assistance. Uh, I've reached out to our two largest cities who both received significant uh, sums of CARES Act dollars as well. And both had uh, loan programs for their businesses earlier this year. And the indication is right now that their businesses are, are doing okay, there's not a demand for funds right now. Uh, in those communities, and of course, that's a majority of where our businesses are in this county. I've talked to some regional partners in other counties about maybe trying to do a collaborative effort. Of um, administering a business assistance program, which business assistance in this case, it's, it's not going to be a loan. It would be a, it would be a grant or a forgivable loan over a short period of time, uh, is what I'm seeing uh, being talked about the most. So I've, I've talked to some regional partners, because most counties, including us, we really aren't set up to run a grant. Or it's essentially a loan program, but it would be a grant, we're not set up to administer something like this. So uh, I've had discussions with some regional partners about the possibility of, of doing that. Um, I do want to get some feedback here today and next week if we discuss this at workshop about if this is something the board wants to pursue. If it's something that we wait on to see if businesses that are forced to close again later this fall enact at that time. Um, the, the one thing that counties are struggling with this is setting the criteria of what constitutes being eligible for these grants. Providing uh, uh, business information about lost revenue, uh, and that type of thing. And of course, you got to be careful with data practices when all that uh, comes to the county. And then also trying to find a, a balance, how do you work in the ag community? And uh, the regular business community and, you know, who has truly been impacted, it, it gets, be difficult to define that. So uh, a lot of counties are, are struggling with that right now. Part of my approach with this initial plan was to try to come up with something that's broad-reaching, that's not just focused on businesses. Where we're focusing on our community, trying to get um, funds to the broadest spectrum of, of citizens that we can in the county. And with the piece that we do have a Business Health and Safety Grant Program uh, proposed in here that would provide assistance to businesses. So um, I guess what we're looking for here today is, is to answer any questions and get initial feedback on this list of programs. And the, the first part that I went through on the reimbursement for the county expenditures is pretty straightforward. And it's something we can, I feel, can just run with unless the board has some thoughts there. But uh, what we're looking for feedback is on these programs, uh, is it something that the board is interested in? Uh, wants more discussion on, are there parts that we can go ahead and go with? And uh, I guess just some general thoughts and specifically on the business assistance piece. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll open it up for questions if you'd like.
Sure.
In, in addition to talking to the city of St. Peter and the city of North Mankato, did you visit with the Chambers of Commerce in those two cities also? Because I think the chambers might have a better feel about who's struggling and why versus the city.
Yeah, uh, in my conversations with both cities, it, it sounded like both um, have had regular communication with the businesses in the community. And that they're not uh, hearing a need right now, but both did express that that could change. Um, I know in St. Peter here, they um, they issued forty-nine loans earlier this year, forgivable, or no, they're repayment loans. Um, for four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, both, St. Peter received about nine hundred thousand in CARES money and North Mankato one point one million. So they both have a significant pot of money as well that they can put towards business assistance as well. And ironically, uh, cities like Niklet and, and Cortland and Lafayette also got. Good-sized amount of money for their, those sides of towns uh, to do things with too, so.
The, the city of St. Peter's program, I believe was broad, was somewhat narrow and some people were disqualified.
Okay.
You know, it was based on rent and utility bills, and if you didn't have a mortgage and didn't pay rent, it really wasn't worth your effort to, to do it.
Right.
I think a visit with the chambers might be a different story.
Mm-hmm, okay.
At least with the business community. Um, I, I realize that the small cities are getting this money too, but they're going to use it like we're going to use it for these in-house things, hopefully.
Yeah, when we did the tax abatement uh, piece earlier this summer, um, our twenty, some applicants that were approved were all from St. Peter. And North Mankato, we reached out to the smaller cities or had the small, si, small towns do that for us and didn't get any applicants, not to say that they're not in need, but. But yeah, I can reach out to the chambers for sure.
Well, and we're going to see need from our home-based businesses that are out there in the county that aren't part of a, a, a city or a community, so to speak. And, and they're kind of struggling too, because they're really cat-ock on some things.
Yeah, that's where this gets tricky is uh, how do you include everybody who's been impacted? But for lack of a better term, don't just roll the money truck down the road and start shoveling money out the back end. It's, it's uh, yeah, it's, it's hard to define who to include in these programs.
I would like to see you visit with the mayors of the three small cities and the townships somehow, I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, I can reach out to the cities really, really easily. I mean, our townships have so few, and they actually have funds too, the townships all got money as well, so.
They're going to put it someplace. Might not know what's going on five miles away.
May I have a couple of questions?
Yes.
Are we exclusively including only the St. Peter Food Shelf? And are we also considering Echo, who serves a big chunk of another portion of our county?
We have been working only with the St. Peter Food Shelf throughout the pandemic. Uh, so I think that we would work with Blue Earth County to see what they're doing with Echo. Uh, we've been using the St. Peter Food Shelf for all of our needs.
When you say all of our needs, we're referring to.
Essential services.
Essential services for HHS.
Yeah, for, yes.
Yeah, I, I just, just wanted to be clear about that. And then going beyond that on the uh, eviction assistance. Is there criteria that addresses only those that are renters and not somebody that's behind in a mortgage? In those same.
For this, no, I think this had uh, foreclosure was included as something that we would love.
Okay, so I mean, it would be eligible for theoretically anybody that would be in, at that risk. I missed that.
Yeah, I think the goal for this one was more of um, preventing homelessness across the board.
Across the board, yeah, okay, thank you.
On these evictions, I thought, uh, in Walts, are they off order, stopping evictions?
Currently, but.
Yeah, I think it runs out.
It's set to expire. And we expect after that point that we'll see.
It'll be en masse.
More applications for different forms of assistance, um, and when people are evicted, the, there, there's no place to go right now.
Well, and, but their needs will still remain, so it's, we're going to pick it up one way or the other.
Uh, personal protection stuff, are we including churches in that, in curfew schools?
We've been working very closely, actually with faith communities, we've sent out regular guidance and then asked for PPE needs. I'd say in the last three weeks, we've delivered more than a thousand masks to congregations.
How's our accessibility to PPE right now? Is it staying steady for the types of products you're developing or you're sending out?
We, yeah, we have been, there was the shortage early on and now we have enough that we've been able to start reaching out and offering to any community members who might be in need. And anticipating that might change a little bit when people start ordering with these funds.
Well, and then jumping back to your respite grant um, for the iPad and distance learning pieces. Uh, was that public schools only, or are we talking any educational K-12 component?
Uh, the funds that we've used so far wouldn't be specific to public schools, those were kids we were already working with who were in need of devices to continue their running.
Yes, Chair. Uh, a few questions if that's all right, Tom. So if, I'm asking you first a broad question, this might be a lying question of. It's very hard to estimate what actually may be spent as we do this. Would it be fair to guess that if we were to do everything on these lists, we would not have enough money? Or are you thinking, oh, we could afford to do everything?
Yeah, I, I think we could afford to do everything, what we could do, um, some of the programs here that we think we might have a, a bigger interest in is put an initial cap on. And then as time goes on, the board can reevaluate extending that. And by then, I'll have a better idea of what's the county's reimbursement hopefully will be, so. But I think we could put something towards all of these, how much, I don't know yet.
On the smaller page, the first one in the gray box is care for homeless populations. I assume we're caring for homeless populations now, is that right?
Yes, uh, the line item for that would specifically be if we need to help people who are displaced, um, have a place to live during the pandemic. And we've also been having regional discussions about providing some funding to MVAC. So that across the board, the programs that are funding homelessness could increase the dollar amount that they are spending toward that.
So I see that as being consistent with the eviction program, right? All are designed to prevent homelessness. If I had to prioritize personally, if there wasn't enough on there, I would say if you're homeless, you come first. And then if you're in threat of being homeless, you would come second, that, that may be obvious to everybody. But the fact that homelessness and this were two different things.
Yeah, the, the, the gray part where it says care for homeless populations is right from the federal guidance. So our expansion into that would be the eviction piece. And then as well as working with the Partners for Affordable Housing and MVAC, uh, that type of thing.
Great. Um, masks has come up a couple of times, and masks is going to come up again later today. I just want to be really clear, when we say all PPE and we say masks, we're not talking about cloth face masks, right? Because that's not PPE, PPE is the N ninety-five or the surgical mask, is that everyone's understanding?
I think when we're talking about businesses though, um, cloth face coverings are uh, an acceptable choice for right now restaurants and small businesses. So we have been providing both, when, so I suppose when we're saying PPE, we tend to mean both because we are supplying both.
And so I'm going to be a pain in the butt here and read from the CDC.
Sure.
Cloth face coverings are not for PPE. So I just want to be clear that when we say masks and PPE, that I'm okay with cloth face masks, we can have a conversation about that. But we're not setting up expectations that we're actually always giving PPE. We may be helping get cloth face masks as well.
Or in some cases, we're helping them get gloves or gowns, face shields, those kinds of things. So we can differentiate that we're doing both.
That's great, and that's going to lead to my next one about schools, if I like. Uh, there are two immediate concerns I think the schools are going to have. One is providing masks, uh, because if we get an order. Uh, or if districts decide to require masks in the schools, they can't stop a kid who shows up without a mask from coming to the school. So the schools are going to need masks. Uh, they may not have budgeted for that, we have maybe no real idea what that expense is going to be. So as we're talking about potentially use of this money, it might be also to secure masks that schools could distribute or call upon a stop mile if needed. And the final thing, Mr. Chair, if I might, uh, on the um, technology, distance learning and the schools requests. Uh, what's happening here is that these devices that we're sending out to students that normally would be used in the school building. Came back at the end of the spring and understandably, need to be repaired, need to be replaced. There are a number of districts that were using mini iPads, for example, the other day, that's not really sufficient. If we're going to go back to another hybrid or distance learning situation, I think that's all we're hearing from one district in our county. They don't have the money to repair, replace these, these pieces of equipment. So that's a little different from the respite care money. This is to help the district as a whole provide the technology for distance or hybrid learning. Thank you.
Jack, if you don't mind, thank you, staff, for the work that you've uh, put into this, very completeness. If I could just focus on that economic support to businesses, I know a couple of comments have come about the idea of contacting chambers. Of commerce type of thing. And in uh, in our area, it's the Greater Mankato Grove. As a member of that board, I have not been asked by that board to ask this county to provide support as of yet. Maybe Ed Lee here in St. Peter might have a better idea on what the St. Peter needs are. I also haven't heard from our biggest taxpayer, commercial taxpayer in Niklet County, Taylor Corp. Who, by all reports, had to lay off a number of people in our community. And so Taylor Corp, if you're interested, I guess they could contact us, correct? Would that fall into this category of business health?
Uh, Mr. Chair, well, that would, that would depend on how, what business assistance program the board established. Most that I have seen, um, the ones I think I sent examples on were, have been typically fifty employers or less. That's been the. That's been the general focus. So again, that, that's where, to your points, that's where it gets difficult to trying to define where this assistance should go cause inevitably you're probably gonna miss somebody.
But again, I don't know, Denny, there might be some pockets of Taylor Corp. that have less than 50, but most are higher than that, I think.
They tend to be, and there were some, there have been some other programs earlier for some of those larger organizations on unemployment that got that first round. I mean, even our, even some of our nonprofits like MRCI and others took advantage of those early programs, which were significant dollars. I mean, that they, they helped offset. And, and the goal ultimately was, and, and I think still carries through with us, is keeping people employed, keeping people as safe as we can and, and helping provide those extraordinary costs. And, and it's a big difference for when you're a small operator and you're having to do things in a completely different way and figure out how that all works. And you're using lots of part-time employees and other things like that. I, I think I understand where we're going and I would support that issue is that we need to provide a way to at least help some of these things happen. It all dovetails together because if we don't put money here, in my view, when somebody is evicted and somebody else, then we have to fund it in a different way, which creates it harder. I think it's economically a lot cheaper to people, keep people in their homes if we can and also to provide the resources we can to keep their children educated as best we can and keep those pieces safe. I mean, I'm sorry, I sounded very political there, but I think the reality of that is that as stewards of public money, I think we have an obligation to, to use that as wisely as we can. And so I support the concept of doing this and recognizing that if we don't do it here, we're going to be doing it here.
So in discussions, Mr. Chair, if I could continue with the whole chamber concept of the Greater Mankato Grove, which I don't know that we've heard a request from Greater Mankato Grove to administer some of these dollars. There is Southern Minnesota Initiative Fund. Where are we or where could they be instrumental in helping?
Yeah, I have had discussions with, uh, Greater Mankato Grove just on the concept of, of them administering a business assistance program. I have not reached out to, uh, Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation yet, but I know a couple of counties that have and, uh, they haven't said yes, but they haven't said no. It really, it falls down, or falls back to, does the board wanna pursue, uh, something like this in the form of a forgivable loan slash grant with X, Y, Z criteria? Uh, if, if the board does, I can certainly continue to pursue that and try to find a partner to help us administer that. If it's not something you wanna focus on and would prefer to focus on these other areas instead, uh, we can certainly go that direction as well.
Well, the idea that Commissioner Morrow brought up about the district that you had visited with i- is something to me that would be a terrific assistance to those types of organizations. I don't know of St. Peter or District 77 or the other districts that reach in with, with needing that kind of thing. Cause we don't know whether there's gonna be school on September 5th or not here in Minnesota. And so if we could somehow assist that Niklet district, if that's the one that we're talking about. I mean, that, that strikes at the heart of what needs to be done, it seemed to me.
Yes.
If I might, I, I, no, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the business assistance. If I were gonna try to help with criteria, like the larger the entity, it seems to me, the greater opportunities they may have for assistance outside of the public realm, whether it's from banks, whether it's from, I'm thinking alumni up the hill. They have a lot of employees. I think that we could easily, or we might have the danger of spending the bulk of the money at one or two places and not be able to do another, a number of other things. Which is not to say they're, all these large employers are tremendously important to the county, absolutely tremendously important. Which makes me pause a little bit about the business assistance part, but how do we do it in a way that serves everyone? I think, Denny, you're talking about that as well.
Yeah, and, and maybe even 50 is too, too many employees. I mean, I think, and speaking to, to what Marie indicated earlier was that there are the mom and pops out there that are still significantly impacted, still have legitimate needs. And how do we drill into that?
I think the mom and pop might have the hardest time accessing any kind of.
Cause they don't have regular employees, it's probably just.
Well, they don't have regular employees, they just don't have the capacity.
They don't have the capacity, but.
They don't have the history of working with lenders.
Right, and so.
How do you communicate that we have this 4.1 million dollars here so people can call up Ryan or call us up?
Well, it really, uh, communicating it's easy. It's determining what that criteria is.
Right, right.
And it, it's, it's tough. I mean, you're gonna have a cer- certain sector of the ag community saying, well, I've been impacted by COVID too.
Right.
They maybe have, but they've generally been excluded from all of these programs.
Well, and I was, that was, I did have a question about that that maybe. There she is. Cause I thought originally there was some discussion that some of those individuals, and going back to one of the referrals here, on the, um, on the ag component, was there not an FDA grant? Or another stream of cash, if you will, to address some of the issue about destruction and disposal of, uh, the surplus livestock?
There was some with, um, NRCS, a grant program. We did have some producers apply for it. Um, they did not qualify. So I think there was like a hand about seven individuals that did qualify and were able to use it in some capacity. But I believe it was very restrictive standards with.
But all of those applications came through, came originally through your office?
No, they went through the NRCS.
NRCS, okay, all right. So it's still something we could visit again, which would make sense to help some of those that maybe were too big or, well, I'm guessing probably they were too small.
Yes, most likely. We, um, it was a variety of different criteria that they had to have in place, and it was just difficult for most of the producers to meet them.
Okay.
Well, some people have their own pay.
Well, no, I, I understand. I, I absolutely understand that they're just the, they're, they're just providing the service in some cases.
Well, that's, may I?
Yeah, please.
That's an interesting concept as you mentioned it. Because for example, the federal ever, there's the paycheck protection program.
Right.
That may not have helped the smaller mom and pops.
Right, yeah.
If they applied.
Well, yeah, but the money was.
If you didn't have income on your prior year's tax return, you didn't qualify.
Right.
Right, so I'm thinking then, if we're gonna talk about doing a business assistance type thing, could we consider a requirement that the entity have applied elsewhere and been denied? So for example, so I'll just think about the tip on the livestock one. If you weren't eligible, or maybe you weren't eligible for that. And that this should be more of a second or backup.
Second chance at the, second bite at the apple kind of thing for the.
Is this something that we should talk about?
I was.
Do we do a little homework and we bring it up to workshop?
Yeah, I can do some homework, uh, on the livestock piece. I, I've got Mandy checking around the state on this piece, and of course, this is all new and there hasn't been a lot of discussion on this. If we ever, if we go down that road, of course, assisting with, uh, burial of carcasses and stuff, you know, we can obviously help there. But if we're gonna provide, provide economic assistance, I think you keep that as its own program and give so much per hog type of scenario. Hopefully, we don't have to do that, but.
Well, and we aren't sure where we are in all of this yet. I mean, this can change. Just as a, a jump, and I'm sorry. On the whole discussion of the eviction assistance, is that typically something that you would envision would be qualified and run through your office, Mandy?
Yes, I, I would. We have a couple of eligibility workers.
Did I just call her Mandy? I'm sorry. I apologize.
We have a couple of eligibility workers reallocated to our public health team right now, so I envisioned that they would make good sense to review those applications.
Mr. Chair, uh, as a different topic, I would completely support helping the food shelf. There's not to say anything about Echo, but when we look at those few food distribution, the busiest lines at the high school, I know there's another one this week, and they're looking for volunteers to help with that. The need seems to be so apparent when you look at hundreds of people lined up.
So.
So I would support the food shelf.
Does, I'm sorry.
Well, I have something, sorry.
Okay, no, you're happy, you're the chair.
What about our people in the western half of the county that probably don't use St. Peter as a food shelf?
They could.
Do they know that?
When I worked at the food shelf, we had people coming from out there. We had a lot from the Laffey area.
And the Health and Human Services partnership with the food shelf has been that we stop by and pick up the food and bring it to wherever the need is for the essential services.
Yeah, and the essential service piece, uh, I mentioned that purchasing food for people in quarantine is eligible. The food shelf, we've, we've been able to not have to spend county funds. The food shelf has provided those to date. But I, I think there's probably a need there to assist.
Well, and, and I guess that's where I was going to, to make that question is, is I think you originally, you were talking about the excess needs for storage at all on, on the original granting. But would it make sense? Or is it eligible to actually make a cash contribution out of these dollars to help assist that, that purchase? Because the food shelves, no matter who we're supporting, is buying food a lot cheaper than we are. If we're going to go out and try and buy those things, does it make sense? Or is it eligible from what you're seeing so far to, instead of being very specific that we make cash grants to those?
Yeah, you can provide them with that, and if they'd use the funds for storage, absolutely, that would be eligible.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking these questions because I, I really think, um, there's a lot of directions we can go and, um, I would support continuing this to our next week's discussion at our meeting. I don't think the timely, you will have more time to get more information. I think there's a trend here. That my guess is I would say that we wanna help people and not just reimburse ourselves and.
Oh, sorry. I, I was gonna just say, I, I think I'm hearing consensus that this is probably the general path to go is reimburse ourselves for what we think is legitimate. And then try to get the money out to as many different demographics and sectors of the county as we can. We can bring this back next week to the workshop and then at that point, I'd like to get a little firmer guidance on at least some of these areas where we can start moving forward with. The business assistance piece, I'll continue to dig into and have communication on, and, um, we can continue that discussion also.
I do kinda have a problem with that, cause you're gonna miss so many people.
Yeah, it's, it's difficult. It's the same discussion we had with the tax abatement, where you cut it off.
Yep.
Uh, we stayed very focused on, on that piece.
And arguably, we may need it again.
Right.
So.
More discussion before we get to Jack?
Okay, well, I'll bring, we'll have the same list of information, uh, next week for workshop.
Thank you.
I'm gonna think about it, too.
Oh, and Cassie, I was visiting with our state rep and he had some very positive comments about.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cassie.
So Jack, you were on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I have some materials that I'd like to distribute in just a moment, but I wanna thank the, uh, county board today for the time to address this topic of wearing face masks in our Niklet County buildings by our employees and suggesting that folks who come to our buildings, that they wear face masks too as they visit and do business. First of all, I wanna thank the county for keeping our employees working since the start of this pandemic, either through onsite or through working from home. This offering of continued county service has been, and I believe is vital to our county residents and is important to our employees in terms of their livelihoods. I certainly appreciate the efforts of our county administration, of our information services to provide us with the opportunity to attend meetings online if we wished to do so. Sometimes things need to be said in public and in person. So I've asked to discuss this voluntary mask-wearing by our county employees. And as I ask the question, I wonder how many of us would be here today if our ancestors hadn't worn a mask during the 1918 flu pandemic in America? I know my grandpa was born in 1898, so he was 20, a couple of years away from being married at the time of the 1918 flu. And he always told us and his grandkids, others, that they wore a mask when they took that five-mile trip into town on the horse and buggy. Now, they didn't get to town much in those days, a hundred and two years ago, but when they did, they wore a mask to stop the spread of that flu. So folks, when I asked members of the board here on June 20th if I could offer an opinion about mask-wearing policy, I had hoped that it would plant the seed for future discussion. And so, Marie? And so here we are. I guess if you'll allow me the opportunity to just convey to you what my thoughts are today on July 14th, 2020. When we took the steps several months ago to say that wearing of masks to prevent the spread of COVID-19 was voluntary in Niklet County buildings, we were in a much different place of understanding the virus and how it is spread. And people hadn't died yet. I think there's a copy for Michelle too, if it's still going along. When fellow Commissioner Terry Morrow suggested at a workshop in March that we consider following the steps of Ramsey County and close our county buildings to visitors and customers, I was personally taken aback, and I think we all were that day. But the action was adopted for safety reasons. When major sports like the NBA, the NHL, Major League Baseball and others shut down, we understood why. When the state fair was canceled, we understood why. When North Mankato Fund Days was canceled, we understood why. When we see people representing the state of Minnesota come to visit us at our board meetings wearing masks to help stop COVID, we understand why. When I walked in a QuickTrip and other businesses who care about the staff and their customers encouraging all to wear masks, we understand why. So my, my plea today, July 14th, which is almost exactly four months after COVID became real, is that this county board have a serious discussion about having the staff who meet our customers wear masks, even if you are behind plexiglass shields today. Now, some might say that deputies patrolling our roads and protecting public safety should not require, be required to wear a mask. Others might argue that deputies wearing a face mask is truly protecting public safety. The uniform is not going to stop COVID. Some might say that the public works, employees working on road projects do not need to be bothered with masks. And if they are out in the open, not coming into contact with people, that argument has merit. However, if they meet with people, the picture changes. So fellow members, for our county employees who meet our county residents, our customers, our taxpayers, to only wear a mask because it's voluntary sends a message that I think we can and should improve on. It's all pretty simple. If you're in a room with people, you do this. Already, our Health and Human Services employees wear masks when meeting with their clients. It's a great example to come from Health and Human Services. Thank you, Cassie. In addition to the question of how can we provide our staff and our visitors with personal protective equipment, PPEs? Well, we just received $4 million in congressional funds. Well, we just received $4 million in congressional funds. Maybe that could help to cover it. So, Mr. Chair, as county commissioners, I believe that we can take a step in setting an example at this meeting. And at future meetings, until this pandemic passes, we can wear masks so we can send a message that we care about each other's health. And so we don't become Arizona, or Florida, or Texas. So you're asking now, what are you asking for? I, I would ask that we review guidelines for mask-wearing in Nicola County. That we consider a policy that would require our employees to wear masks when they meet with visitors. So if you're in your office, rest of the day, you're not meeting with anybody, this is where you wear it. This is where, the way you wear it when you're meeting with someone. And I'd also ask to see if this body would like to place signage on our buildings stating that Nicola County prefers that you wear a mask during this pandemic to protect the health of Nicola County residents and their own health. I was here three weeks ago with an opinion. Today, I'm here asking your thoughts to consider. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jack, I'm gonna say this with the greatest of respect, because I have a mask here. And I think as we discuss what our employees should be doing, we should also model the behavior we would expect of our employees. As you read your statement, you took your mask off. And that's why I'm sitting here without a mask right now. Because I think it's a challenge to speak and to be heard well. And I may be completely wrong about that, but as a public official, I know, I think first and foremost, folks have to be able to hear what I'm saying. And understand what I'm saying. So if someone were to say, Terry, you're sitting at this table right now without a mask, how can you contemplate even requiring anyone else to wear a mask? I would come back to the CDC guidelines. To reduce the spread of COVID-19, CDC recommends people wear cloth face coverings in public settings when around people outside their household, especially when other social distancing measures are difficult to maintain. If we were closer, I would say, yeah, I think we're gonna have to wear the mask. We're gonna have to give up the ability to be heard well, as, as you and I are speaking, for example, right now. I would question the number of people we have in this room. I don't think, I think once a, an administrator gives a report, unless there's a reason to stay, we don't have to have people staying in the room. Moving now, Jack, to your point about, if I might, to your point about, or should I, do you want me to stop there?
No, no.
Okay. I think you raise a fair question. I was thinking about folks who may have to come into this building because they really don't feel they have an option. So, for example, we don't yet have a Dropbox. They feel they have to come into the building to bring in whatever document they need to bring in. We may have residents who are at high risk, who are health compromised and feel they have no choice but to come in. In that situation, I could see where someone's saying, well, this is great. You've got the screen, but I'm still within six feet of someone else. And the public employee is not wearing a mask. And so I do think we should have that discussion. What, what is, what do we think about that interface with the public? When somebody who is high-risk feels they have to come into the building, they have no choice, and they're working with employees who are not masked. So, Jack, on that point, I do think there's a fair amount of discussion. And those are my initial thoughts.
Well, my thought is, he said preferred, you know, for the signage. I wouldn't have a problem with that at all.
Mr. Chair, I'm glad we have department heads here too, because maybe they'd like to weigh in, or maybe they just want to hear.
And I will add to Commissioner Morrow's point, yes, typically, I wouldn't want everybody hanging around like this, but I did ask most of them to attend this piece, so. The, the one, well, I'll just interject here and then others can speak too. The one piece with not requiring the public to wear a mask, but staff to, is the, the whole, part of the theory behind masks is, is to protect others. So are we sending a message to staff that we care about the customer's health, but not our staff's health? Because it, it goes both ways. The flip side to that is we do have issues, or not issues, logistical issues, I guess, with this building particularly. If we mandate masks of the public, because we are a polling place here and under federal guidance, I believe it's guidance at this point, we are not allowed to mandate somebody to wear a mask who's here to vote. So we would have to screen every person coming in the door if we mandated the public to wear a mask. So there's plenty of two, two sides to that whole issue of making it mandatory for the public or not. I guess I'll just open it up to others that have thoughts.
So what happens if the governor orders masks then? Is it, or maybe Jackie, that's a Jackie question?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think you can come up Jackie. I believe we've gotten this guidance from the Secretary of State's office, right?
Right.
Good morning.
Yeah, we are currently waiting on the Secretary of State's for more guidance on that. Right now, their guidance is verbally that election judges should wear masks at the polling place. But the, the, the challenge is, is requiring people to wear masks to vote. And, and like I said, this is a voting place. Fringes on voting rights. We're unclear at this point. We haven't gotten direct guidance. I even did a check with Blue Earth County, how they are handling it. And they are kind of in the same situation because they're in the city ordinance. But the voting rights, from what I understand, are, are higher, oversee the ordinance. Supercede that. But like I said, we haven't gotten clear direction. I've been kind of following other states with their voting. It's been challenged quite heavily. I, I, I would throw caution to the wind. I don't want to be that county that lands in the news. And I'm, and I'm saying I understand both sides of it. Completely understand it. But I, I do want to be very cautious when it comes to voting because of their voting rights. We could never turn somebody away. We could ask them to wear a mask. We can offer them a mask, but we could not ultimately have them not vote. Now, there are other options. I mean, there is curbside voting, or there's vote by mail, there's other options for them. But if they want to vote in person here, we, we have to allow that. I would want to allow that to them, so.
Yes, Chair.
But the Secretary of State's recommendation is that election judges do wear a mask?
At this point, yes. But we are still waiting for our official guidelines on that. We haven't gotten clear directions.
There was some debate that came out of some other states on that.
There is some debate on that, and, and we are still waiting on clear guidelines. But as we understand, I mean, voting is on August 11th, but we do have a polling place right here now.
Which we have to have, right? I will, Mr. Chair. Oh, I'm sorry, Marie, you, go ahead, Marie.
Which departments are open to the public now after we reopen? It's still fairly limited access to employees in the building, is it not?
Yes, so.
Voting, PPSD at the counter, and that's about it. And I'm excluding law enforcement and, and public works.
Yeah, so it's, uh, we're, we're all open for business, but we're extremely controlling the traffic flow for licensing and those types of services by trying to spread them out and keep them separated. Mandy, I believe, are you doing appointments or appointments? Yep. And I believe Lorna is too. And most of your stuff is in the field as well, so. Probation is out in the field as far as I'm aware. I believe they are wearing masks too, of course. Health and Human Services, we are by appointment only. Sheriff's Office is operating as, as usual and Public Works are as usual. The vast majority of the traffic in the building is for licensing.
Actually voting.
And voting will pick up and as courts slowly picks up, yeah, we'll have more people in the building for sure later this summer.
And the court system has mandated the mask-wearing.
Courts are mandated on third floor for people there specifically for court business, basically, right?
The Supreme Court issued, move this way because otherwise we'll get feedback. The courts has, Supreme Court has issued that order requiring that anyone entering a building for purposes of the court system and judicial process, they are required to wear a mask and can only remove that if they're able to socially distance or there's the plexiglass barrier in place, or they're directed to by the judge.
And all of our open spaces at this point have a plexiglass barrier.
Yeah, we've, we've, as you see here, in this building and actually all of our buildings, where we didn't have it ready, have put permanent glass in. And we're actually going to be installing additional glass here at PPSD between cubicles as well. So we're continuing to expand upon that.
And we should be able to reimburse for all of that.
Yeah, we're, I feel like in this building, we've got one layer of protection, most of the time, of either six feet, a shield, or a mask if, if necessary.
Cassie, your office, when they're doing one-on-ones in a conference room, your SOP is masked anyhow regardless, right?
We're requiring it of staff members and of community members.
Of community members, right.
We have it available for people when they come in the door. And we're sending that notice out to them ahead of time.
So they have, they have prior. If I may, I'd continue. I, I, I agree that this topic needs to be not only now, but constantly revisited. But I, and I, again, would, would suggest that this is something that we would spend more diligence and more time with at our next work session, which is not that far away. And it gives us time to look at several of the other issues. Would be my recommendation and my choice.
I think that's an excellent idea. That's Terry.
Thank you, Ryan. And I, nothing I've said personally is meant to cast aspersions, but if I might, Mr. Chair, if, if there's anyone in the room has any guidance or thoughts for us, I would hope they would feel okay to share it.
Yeah, that's why I asked everybody here. I, Sheriff Lang, I believe, is on vacation this week, but Carl is here and I've communicated with Sheriff Lang. Of course, the sheriff's position is an elected position. They can just, at their discretion, decide how they want to pursue the mask issue, but and Carl can speak to this too, but David indicated to me that he has concerns about his deputies and staff being able to communicate with individuals. When, back to Commissioner Morrow's point of the communication piece is important, and especially for law enforcement, so again, Sheriff Lang would have to make that final decision, but I don't know if you have anything else to add with that, Carl?
Correct. I actually just spoke briefly with Sheriff Lang this morning and reiterated exactly what the administrator said. And our concern is it was while speaking to the public, I mean, after being painted with a broad brush in recent times and lambasted in the media, I think it's imperative that we maintain and we continue to de-escalate and talk clearly and concisely when we can. And I think if we are mandated to wear a mask at all times, we lose that ability to do that. I will take what Commissioner Morrow said with Commissioner Kohler's, when you put the mask down, I'm only assuming that's in order to speak clearly and concisely to the members here. That with us having to wear masks all the time, we would lose that ability to talk clearly, concisely. We currently have N95 masks handed out to all our deputies. We have cloth masks that have been given out to all staff members. We try and have people step out of their houses so we can have that distancing in between that time. So we're trying to be proactive. That's, that's where we look at it from our standpoint.
If I may, Carl, when you do have to render emergency first aid and other cares, you have adequate PPE for your staff in that event that they are in that bioenvironment. So you have the N95s, you have the gloves, you have all of those things, and your protocol would require you to apply those things at that time, right?
Yes, we got the face shields, the gowns, and, and again, sometimes time is of the essence and we can't always, but that's a.
That's, are your pri, one of your priorities?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
And fire departments have the same equipment, right?
Most of them do, yeah.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Carl? More on this whole subject? Yes, Ryan?
I'll just add, on the public work side, I know Commissioner Kohler's addressed that in his, in his memo here, and, and obviously, I think we all agree, our plate operators out in the cab in the middle of the county by themselves don't really need a, a mask, but we, we do have several situations where our staff are in close contact with each other either in a vehicle or out on a road project, or digging in a trench, whatever it is where they have to, because of the nature of their job, be close to each other in very warm and uncomfortable temperatures and climates that are, the question would be, would we require a mask in that case? And then we also have our engineering crew who are out working with the Mathewitzes of the worlds. Face, and they need to be face-to-face and working close together. Are we going to require masks of those staff in those situations? So, a-again, it's, uh, because we're such a diverse organization and provide so many different services, it's, it's one of those situations where we have to think through how we would address some of these issues.
And like you said, with the contractors, there's probably noise out there, certainly wind. It's hard to communicate. Yes, Jackie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have one more comment that, that focuses on public services in our license center. One thing to keep in mind where some of our challenges are. First off, I should say I agree that if we are in a meeting position where if I have somebody in my office, there's somebody that does want somebody to wear a mask, we would certainly do that. Especially if there's no glass or plexiglass or any social distancing. I think that is a good idea. Some things we're running into in public services is that we need to be able to identify people. We're dealing with driver's license passports, identifying that I have the person in front. And some masks, we can still identify them. Some of them have been pulled up in the, you know, they're the, the one that pulls up and, and I really can't identify that person. And in the speaking clearly, we need to be able to communicate. The glass has really been, and we love our glass in front of us. But it does pose a challenge to hearing customers where we feel like we're really shouting to get through that. And, and that's okay. We're fine with that. So I, we do need to be able to identify people. We need to communicate. But like I said, I would be in, in support if we are not behind glass, if I'm in a meeting room, if I have a, a client that's coming in. Most definitely, that would be, would be expected. So just being clear with the identification purposes and, and things that we do in our office, I just wanted to make that up.
I have a broad question for all of our department heads. Is there any, any reports to you of, by staff of being uncomfortable with our outstanding policy? Because our policy is if you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. And I, and we haven't heard anything to this point, but I, I just want to be real specific about that. Is there some level of discomfort that, that you feel that somehow, or this employees might feel that somehow we're not giving them every opportunity to reach a level of safety they're comfortable with?
Well, we deal with a lot of customers in our department. We, we're very busy. We have sta, we have masks available in the office. We talk about it a lot. If anybody, we all, and I, I talk about it all the time. If you feel like you want to wear a mask, please do. But you don't have to. It's whatever you're comfortable with. And so as for, as for my, my area, I think there's a comfort level that we can please everybody.
Yeah, I'll just say, I'll ask Jamie here, because Jamie has a pulse of kind of the whole county when it comes to things like that. Any general themes as far as, I'm aware, we haven't heard anything, maybe a few individuals have commented, but.
No, I haven't heard any negative feedback on not requiring masks. We did have quite a few staff take advantage of masks that we did provide. We kept a list just to track how many people actually requested them. I have not obviously been over at HHS at all, so I don't know what your staff's doing over there. But no, no negative feedback. This is back in May, and as to Jack's point, things do look a little bit different now. But no, no negative feedback. Um, this is back in May, and as to Jack's point, things do look a little bit different now. Um, but there was a regional survey that went out to all HR directors on reopening masks, taking temperatures, all of that. And out of the 27 counties that were surveyed, not a single one is requiring masks. Now, that could have changed. I, HR directors haven't talked about it recently, um, but that was how everyone reopened. It's very similar.
I did get one email from a county resident. All got the same ones.
We probably did.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I could just rejoin, what I thought I heard you say, because you're kind of far away. But Blue Earth County just picked it up a notch on Friday. Their county attorney suggested that, uh, they fall under the Medicaid ordinance. The tech guy was kind of odd, because that's a small, that's a large and more important entity deciding to adopt a city of Medicaid ordinance. We don't have that here. Um, so Blue Earth County is in on requiring masks.
I'd, I'd, I'd like to follow up with Jamie or Ryan. Have we had any other input from MCIT on procedures and/or policies? I, when I've been reading, they've been staying pretty neutral on that topic, but I was just wondering if there was any advisories there with regard to any workman's comp issues or anything else that might be coming forward, um, since Minneapolis has had their run of issues now too. So, it's just, I'm asking that question.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen anything from MCIT.
Okay, right, thank you.
Yes, Chair. First off, Jack, I want to thank you for bringing up the topic. I, I do. I, uh, wanted to pick up on nothing Denny just said. I will, and I'm sure you all are doing this, I want to be real clear that our staff understands if they personally have concerns, they should share them. So, when you were mentioning, for example, in public works, two people being in a vehicle together. If a person, if an employee feels uncomfortable, maybe they live with a high-risk person, I personally would just want to assure them, you can't bring that up without fear of retaliation.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, I think we're trying to encourage, uh, respect for everybody's belief on this, on the subject, and also be respectful of each individual's situation, um, regarding their health and that type of thing. I'm part of a, of organization, uh, that has older individuals that have health issues, and we all agree that we wear a mask when we meet, uh, out of respect for them. So, I, I think, I see that happening here as well. I don't see people intimidating others, trying, or trying to intimidate them not to wear a mask. I haven't seen that.
One problem I see with a couple of people is if, if they're slightly hard of hearing, they want to be looking right at you.
Yeah.
And being three feet away.
Well, and that, that's why we invested in putting in the glass and doing all the other things, so that we could provide some level of safety, and we made the commitment to make it permanent. I mean, it was not just, here's some temporaries that we're using on these tables, that we made all of those spaces very specifically permanent, so, and I, and I appreciate that. I think that's where we need to be right now. And so, again, I would encourage us to have this discussion again at our, at our work session.
Jack, any final comments?
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to, to air this, uh, this topic, and I think it's important that we do. I don't know that we had enough, I, I think when everything was moving really quickly, back when we said, yeah, uh, this policy of voluntary is cool, let's move on to the next topic. That was April, was it, uh, Jamie, or?
Um, yeah, yeah, it was.
It was somewhere in that neighborhood of what in the world is it that we're dealing with? I just want us to be aware that as I watch people come in here today, just this morning, many were masked. And when I thought, well, gee, if they see folks who are kind enough to put their mask on, it will show that we share each other's concern for each other's health. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. Move on. Yes, it's up to me.
It is.
Uh, sat through the, uh, lower Minnesota watershed, uh, organization meeting, kind of?
First one or second one?
Uh, the one, second one, I guess. I did it online. I didn't say anything. It was only like 45 minutes. And I went to a retirement, over at Health and Human Services, uh, went to the soil, water, I guess, WCD meeting, Niclet. And, uh, coal commissioner of ours, Mr. Tom Mahoney from Fairmont, passed away and seemed to be a wonderful network. Okay, Terry?
Okay, pass for the moment, I have been looking them up.
Okay, we'll start the other end, Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we had our TDS board meeting on June 25th. We were still meeting via Zoom, a couple of TDS finance meetings, because the, uh, delivery of books in our region by TDS is, uh, now has a new vendor, and we had to take a look and see who that would be. At the INTRAC meeting yesterday, our immunization tracking joint, both powers board, uh, wanted to share that, uh, they're going to wait until September on the budget for 2021, and they may not bill counties for the second half. So, that's, I guess, good and bad, because the state doesn't know where their money is going to come from yet. There have been routine immunizations happening, uh, despite COVID, and on the COVID conversation at the meeting, um, the goal, of course, is to make sure that, that the healthcare industry is not overwhelmed in Minnesota. It was mentioned that Minnesota did not open too early, or at least that's where it feels like it is now. But the positive tests are going up in the state. Younger people are getting infected. And so, the public health message needs to be, be vigilant through this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Marie?
Well, I attended the Brown Niclet Community Health Board, uh, conference Zoom. I was here, everybody else was locked in. Um, went together again for the one watershed, one water, one plan meeting, um, primarily to set the criteria for a consultant. Um, the leading ethnically diverse communities group had a quick Zoom meeting last week, because they've kind of not been able to meet. And other than that, the rest of it has been busy.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Brown Niclet, along with Marie, I came in remotely. Marie was here with her opportunity. Um, had the executive board meeting at MRCI. Um, I just want to share specifically on that topic that there appears to be some misunderstanding that MRCI has gone away. That's really not the case. It's, MRCI is having to change its format based on funding and some other realities. The new MRCI, which is in the process of slowly being rolled out, instead of requiring lots of space and all of the clients being bussed to them and routed and dealt with in the community. The going-forward plan is going to be very different. It's going to be an MRCI without walls, where smaller groups will be with their provider at any given time and will be community-based. So, there's a huge change in the structure of the operation and how they're going to roll forward. There'll be some changes, and DHS is changing some licensing requirements, and they're really at the, kind of the forefront in the new reality of what this is. And so, there are some changes coming forth in that, and so I just wanted you to be aware of that as a group. Along with that, uh, the statewide emergency communications finance board, I've had one meeting and another meeting tomorrow with them. And, um, let me just verify that I have everything else here. Oh, we have the, um, stakeholders meeting with the county attorney's office this week also, or this past week also, uh, pretty well-attended. Lots of people with lots of differing interests in that, especially with their schools and, and the providers to those kids. So, um, a great discussion, and it's always good to hear what they're hearing versus what we know too. So, it's, it's very helpful in that regard. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ryan, meetings and conferences?
Thank you, Terry. Skip Terry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Go ahead, Ryan. I'll, I'll drop in afterwards. Well, I was, I was, it's very short on the chemical health, uh, group and also the public health group. Uh, I would just appoint members to the email we received from Cassie on Friday with the update and a lot of red print on it. It might be good to have it, that be a topic for our workshop, just an update on everything from contact tracing to what we're doing in, uh, environmental health in terms of identifying or contacting restaurants, that type of thing. If that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sorry, sorry, Terry. Ryan?
Uh, meetings and conferences, of course, uh, status quo, they're all canceled. I, I believe the policy, uh, committee or conference in September for AMC is still officially on, but I anticipate that to be canceled.
I don't think it's going to fly.
Uh, you got the email from the Township Association that they canceled as well, so.
Which is kind of too bad, the, the things we discussed today, but.
Yeah, I, she called me for advice, and it's, uh, there's nothing on that agenda that, that couldn't wait till November, so.
Well, we could Zoom it in November if we have to, so.
Motion on perdues and expenses?
Move it.
Second, motion second, any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, passes. Any reason to not adjourn?
Not that I can think of. Who do adjourn?
Second.
Motion second to adjourn, any discussion? All favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no, passes. Guess I'll call the range authority meeting in order, or did we want a break?
Let's do it, though.
Okay.
Move the consent.
Second.
Motion second on the consent agenda. Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Are we, a motion to adjourn?
Nope, you've got some.
Oh, the ditch repair.
Repair report.
It's the same color, confused.
I know.
No, that's supposed to be on the consent agenda.
Was that considered consent agenda, the way it was written?
Yeah.
Threw me off.
Yeah, we typically do that consent.
So, we.
So, then, but we still should address that issue. So, I would move the, uh, the ditch repair reports. As part of the consent.
As part of that consent agenda.
I think that's been established.
Oh, all right. As long as you're comfortable with it, as long as our record keeper is, I'm fine.
We have a second, right?
Yeah, I got, thank you, Denny.
All opposed? All, all favor say aye.
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 No, passes.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all favor say aye.
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 Passes. Adjourn.